So at least we have some normacy and we can, you know, and we can take care of the kiddos a little better when they're going to. I mean, I know we're only got forty-five percent coming back from the border, but um my buddy and Baker, my, my dear Baker, he's got ninety-eight percent going back.
Good evening. I'd like to call to order the school board meeting of August eleventh, two thousand and twenty. This evening, our invocation and pledge of allegiance will be led by Vice Chairman Amy Pennock.
Good evening. Um, I have a, um, I'm gonna take this off so I can speak better. I have a, um, just a, a little, um, respond to life poem that I found in a book. I don't know who the author is, so I can't contribute it, but it's respond to life. Respond to lo- with love to those who might otherwise annoy you, and suddenly the annoyance is gone. You'll be better off. Respond with patience to situations that might otherwise make you frustrated, and suddenly the frustration is gone. In its place will be energy for positive achievement. Respond with understanding to things that might otherwise anger you. The anger will dissolve. Instead of destructive rage, you'll see creative possibilities. Respond with determination to events that might otherwise cause you dismay. You will find yourself powerfully motivated to move positively forward. Respond with enthusiasm to tasks you might otherwise find tedious. You'll find a way to create new and lasting value. Respond to life as if each moment is a grand experience filled with positive and unique possibilities, and that's just how it will be. I wish every family, teacher, staff member, student, a, a very successful week next week. And if everyone will please stand and do the pledge.
Let the record reflect that Superintendent Griffin, School Board Attorney Ms. Beaman, School Board Clerk Ms. Maramis, and all school board members are in attendance this evening. School Board members, the roll call order for this evening will be as follows. Member Sanchez, Member Kraus, Vice Chair Pennock, Member Calderon, and then myself. Thank you. Superintendent, do you have any agenda modifications?
I have two items, Chair. The first is the addendum to the clause, a more electronic agenda by a green flag named addendum item. And the second, I want to pull an item. I'm gonna pull, I'm from the agenda item five K, the Environmental Studies Center HVAC project.
Thank you. School Board members, any questions or modification? Uh, Member Sanchez.
Um, no modifications. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Kraus.
No. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Vice Chair Pennock?
No modifications. Thank you.
Thank you. Member Calderon?
No, ma'am. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve the agenda outline?
No, moved.
There's a second. Any discussion?
Tina.
Tina?
No, Jill was.
Thank you. All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Thank you. Superintendent, any presentation, presentations or recognitions tonight?
Um, there are none, but we do have a focus on student achievement.
Thank you.
And with, um, schools starting on Monday, um, Board, you need to get an update. Um, so we went, um, a short update from elementary, middle, high school, um, virtual school, ESE, and teaching and learning. So we'll start with our elementary executive directors. And let's have Ms. Faison ready to go right behind them, and Mr. Godra ready to go, followed by Dr. Weisong, Dr. Walsh, and Dr. Guard Harold.
Good evening, Board members. Just to let you know, at elementary, we are continuing to finalize schedules. There's still schedules being made and changed, um, pretty much on a daily basis, but I think probably by the end of the week, we'll see that, um, calm down and, and, um, students will be able to see their schedules. Um, as far as our teachers are concerned, uh, they've been back now, this is their second week. Um, back mostly remotely, um, but also working in their classrooms, attending PD through WebEx. The Department of Teaching and Learning has had many, many offerings for them, really providing a lot of support for them. And so, and specifically, especially for the Seminole Connect teachers as well. So that's been going really well. Rooms are getting prepared. I know you've seen on television some of the, um, pictures and some of the preparations that are taking place at the school. Dr. Cummings is gonna talk a little bit about some other preparations.
Thank you.
So our principals, um, have been preparing their campuses. Our teachers are very excited. Um, they've been communicating, um, with their face-to-face parents. Um, we are having, starting to host our small group, um, face-to-face meet and greets with our pre-K to, uh, and kindergarten students and those new to the school. So, um, schools are scheduling those, um, this week. Um, we also will have several, um, open house meetings by WebEx. So all the grades one through five will be those by WebEx instead of face-to-face. Um, and then we are also in the process of distributing, um, our devices to, um, students that are doing Save My Seat and Seminole Connect. So that's all going on currently. VPK enrollment, we currently have, um, forty, four hundred and ninety-five students fully enrolled. We have another forty-one pending. Um, Kid Zone registration, um, we have about sixteen hundred students registered, um, for Kid Zone. Those numbers pretty much mirror, um, the number of students that are actually doing face-to-face percentage-wise, um, given the four options that parents have had to select from. So our elementary schools are very excited. Um, we're off to a great start. The campuses look great, and, um, we are looking forward to a great school year.
Thank you. Hi.
Good evening, school board members and Dr. Griffin. Um, I'm going to echo a lot of the, um, things that the elementary executive directors have already shared. Um, middle schools have been fully engaged in professional development activities for the past two weeks, either facilitated by their school administrative teams or through, um, our district level, um, departments. Teams are also working on refining school schedules, um, to address missing periods on schedules due to conflicts, balancing course loads, and accommodating change requests, and some new student enrollments that we're experiencing at some campuses. Um, they have also begun distributing devices to the Save My Seat and Seminole Connect students. Um, they're also hosting their virtual meet-the-teacher and scheduled pickups on the, uh, back end of this week. Uh, many of are happening either Thursday or Friday remotely, uh, for our families. Um, we also have teachers who are working with staff to prepare their facilities for the first day of school. So we are moving on along.
Thank you.
Good evening, Dr. Griffin and Board members. High schools are ready to roll. Any questions? It's been a long time since I've gotten a chance to speak at a board meeting. Sorry.
You have a mic, do you?
Yeah, probably not. Um, the high schools, principals, administrators, teachers have been working very hard for longer than the two weeks the teachers have been back. Talked to all of the high school principals yesterday and today to get updates on their master schedule. All of them indicated they felt like they were in a good place right now, which, which was very exciting considering we, we still have some days left before, um, students get back. They've been working with teachers to get their rooms ready. When teachers came back, of course, they may have had twenty-five or thirty desks in a room. So they've been working with them to get their rooms ready for a smaller face-to-face, um, um, student population. They've also been working on their bell schedules here the past two weeks to get those bell schedules ready, to add in a third lunch and to have less, um, passing time or less class changes. So they've been working on that. And of course, the teachers did all of the PD that Dr. Gun, um, Sean Guard-Herald and his staff made available the last two weeks, which I think really helped them get ready for the hybrid situation where they may be teaching face-to-face and Seminole Connect in the same class. So we may or may not be ready to roll right now, but we're gonna be ready to roll on August seventeenth.
Member Sanchez?
Um, I have a couple of questions. Should I wait until everybody's done, and then we'll do that?
Sure.
Okay.
Thank you.
Good evening, Board members. Dr. Griffin, I want to thank you for the confidence that you've shown in Seminole County Virtual School uh, in identi- in identifying SCBS as one of the options that our families have when they return next week. Uh, I also want to take a moment to acknowledge the work that Deb Camilleri, our, our virtual school principal, and her leadership team have done. Ever, ever since the moment SCBS was identified as, as one of the, um, options for our families, they have worked tirelessly, uh, evenings, weekends, around the clock, uh, to make this work. Um, as of this afternoon, we are expecting about twelve thousand five hundred FTE at our virtual school next week. Uh, that's just under ten thousand students in the Save My Seat option, and then the remaining FTE are in the hybrid option. Uh, we also, um, have higher-than-typical numbers transferring to Seminole County Virtual School full-time as their school of enrollment. Um, so even that is scaling up. Um, in terms of faculty, between the core faculty at virtual, um, faculty who have been temporarily assigned to virtual school and then a few, uh, new hires that we've done, uh, we had about four hundred and seventy teachers on our first pre-plan, um, WebEx meeting last week. And of course, just like their brick-and-mortar peers, they've been working last week and this week to prepare for instruction, going through those virtual courses, customizing where they are permitted to do so, and, uh, getting ready for students. So overall, this is about an eleven X scale-up for our virtual school. Um, really just a tremendous amount of effort, um, particularly in the last three weeks as numbers have come in. I also want to thank and acknowledge, um, Jill Fearley, Nicola Williams, and Kyle Hughes. They are leaders of other parts of the E Pathways team, and they and their teams have stepped up, um, to, um, really assist with all of the, um, additional work that needs to be done, outreach to families, um, onboarding of teachers. Um, it's been a tremendous, uh, team effort. So, uh, we're currently still, uh, master scheduling, um, linking student requests to teachers. As that information comes from schools, we're accommodating, uh, family requests for changes uh, as best we can. Uh, and, um, we are working very closely with Florida Virtual School on the, again, pretty massive upload of data um, to, um, link those teachers and courses together. Uh, we, uh, we, uh, are certainly on track to have as much ready as possible by August seventeen. Changes that come in later this week will be harder to have, uh, completely ready for day one. Um, but certainly, uh, in virtual, uh, there is this notion of, of being able to start at different times and on-demand. So in some cases, we've had families who've said, can we start a couple of days later? And so we're, we're getting all of that really optimized, uh, at this point. Uh, but, uh, we, uh, again, we're honored, uh, to have the opportunity to serve these families and, and looking forward to, uh, next week. So thank you.
Good evening. Our alternative programs are ready to roll. We have about ninety-five percent of our students that are coming face-to-face. Um, of our fifteen thousand ESE students under the umbrella, ten thousand being under IEPs, and the other group of students, five thousand receiving, uh, under EPs, um, the ten thousand students of those students, we have forty-seven percent that will be face-to-face. Um, the other twenty-nine percent will be, um, Seminole Connect, and then hybrid, and then SCBS. We've reviewed fifteen hundred IEPs that, of students that have requested SCBS, and, um, our IEP teams met at schools to address concerns or to determine whether or not there was a more appropriate, um, service model for the student. And then, of course, um, our gifted students, thirty-nine percent requested face-to-face, where the majority of the other students had requested SCBS. So that's it for me. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. All right. So, um, this afternoon, Michael Lawrence, um, from our communications department deployed, um, all of the information to all of our families regarding our family's support tile. That went out through our, um, social media. It went out through a school messenger blast, and then, um, also, I believe there may, I have, I have a voicemail on my phone. I don't know if there was a call to a company, so. Um, and then we also shared this information with all of our teachers so that they know to appoint our families, um, to this parent support tile or the family support tile. Um, it's also active in all of our students' portal, uh, clever portals, so it's accessible to anybody, anywhere, um, so that they can get the information that they need to successfully navigate, um, distance learning. And so I'm just gonna take you through a couple of things here. This site, um, is live. It goes directly from the Seminole County Public Schools website. When I go to the slider right here, it's going to be item number three, I believe. Uh, let's see here. It's one of these. Let me reopen or refresh here. There it is. Uh, supporting families and navigating online learning. So if a family clicks on that, they go directly to this page. And the first thing I will tell all of our parents, because I know that this may be a trick that students might like to play on Monday. If a student says, "Oh, man, I forgot my password since the last time I logged in," if they go to student tips right here, the very first place they can click is, "Are you having issues with your SCPS password?" Well, we can solve that for you. Ta-da. Um, and now you can go to first period. So they'll be all set. Um, and then additionally, for parents in here, we have resources to help them navigate Google Classroom, navigate, um, eCampus, navigate iReady. Um, iReady is something that parents won't have experienced as much of in the past, or maybe Google Classroom. So when we go to iReady, there's training videos in here, um, and you can see that we have the training video. And then we also have a, um, technical support guide for families in Spanish. Um, and then if I go back here to Google Classroom, there's all sorts of resources for how to log into Google Classroom, how to use Google Hangouts Meet, all of those tools that we typically use in our Google Classrooms. And then finally, um, the, for our families that are, um, maybe English is not their first language. Mrs. Cardona and her team have worked with us on translating some of the materials that are in here, but also there is the translation service, um, phone number, so that Mrs. Cardona and her team can, um, help support all of our families with the needs that they have.
Ms. Sanchez, you had a question?
Um, yes. Um, Dr. Cummings and, um, um, Dr. Dillinger, I had a quick question about, um, first of all, thank you all of you for, it's a lot to do and everything like that. Um, one of the questions that I had for Kid Zone, are all the Kid Zone programs up and running? Are they all gonna be, or do we get enough enrollment for all of them?
The, um, currently, the middle school programs are suspended due to low enrollment. Um, three of our elementary schools also have low enrollment, um, but those schools also have Twenty-First Century programs. So generally, the enrollment's been low. As a result of that, um, we just really tried to work with those schools. Um, so we are gonna take a look at schools again, um, prior to the beginning of the second nine weeks, um, and hopefully we'll be back up and running.
Okay, thank you. And then, um, also, um, for time that the students are entering into school, you know, they fluctuate a little bit, excuse me, and, um, I know that free and reduced lunch students or kids that want breakfast, are they able to go before the, you know, we're saying that they have to be there at eight forty or whatever the time might be for that elementary school? Are they able to go into the cafeteria and get their food?
You mean students that come to school?
Yes, in the morning, because I know that we're not having, you know, facilities where they can just sit there and wait and so on and so forth at that point until the bell rings. Am I correct?
Well, the schedule will basically be the same as it has always been. Kids will be there for Kid Zone, but kids have always been able to go into the cafeteria to have breakfast in the morning. So that will still happen. And I think food services is doing something a little bit different, but breakfast will still be available for students.
Okay, and if a teacher wants to have her kids eat in the classroom, are we allowing that or no?
At lunchtime? If a teacher elects to have lunch with their kids for whatever reason they choose to do that, we haven't said they can't do that.
Okay.
Um, at all. So I think it's gonna be totally up to that teacher.
Yeah.
And the size of the, the class and whatever the teacher wants to do, but we haven't said you cannot do that. Um, teacher preference.
Right. I used to love taking my class in my room and, you know, being able to just be in there together. Um, and then, trying to think what else it was. Um, how many do we have so far for face-to-face, uh, just like a ballpark frank number for all the schools? Is it about fifty percent or?
We did do those numbers. I don't have those. I can get that for you.
A, a little over forty-three percent, uh, for face-to-face.
All right, thank you. I appreciate it. Thank you so much.
Board members, um, this, the tile that, um, Dr. Guard-Herald went over, I want to give them a whole lot of credit. This was our request fourth quarter. Remember, we had a lot of parents. It went to be pivoted very, very quickly. So this is a phenomenal resource, and, um, I just appreciate, I don't know how they're getting everything done that we're asking, um, but we're gonna get a lot of good feedback on this, 'cause it, if you take the time to look through it, it answers a lot of questions. It has them with a video that we spoke about and so on. So thank you, um, Sean and your team. Really appreciate it.
Thank you to everybody that gave us an update. I know there was a lot of heavy lifting done. I know schedules were completed months ago and had to be totally redone, uh, very labor-intensive. So please thank all the folks who worked on master scheduling at all the schools.
Thank you. Okay. Public comment. Um, Vice Chair Pennock, would you read the statement, please?
The public input segment of this meeting is provided for the purpose of permitting persons to per- present specific matters to the board for its consideration and action or referral to the superintendent and his staff. The public input segment of this meeting is not open to presentations of campaign issues by political candidates, matters involving student disciplinary action, pending employee disciplinary matters, or pending litigation. Each individual member of the public is limited to three minutes. A designated group representative may have up to six minutes. You will see at each podium, we have placed a speaker bar and a, a sign to, um, when you come up and speak, to please not touch the podium so that we can, um, appropriately use social distancing and, and, um, follow Jill's guidelines.
Thank you. So we've got the two podiums up here for the speakers, and the order will be Jeffrey Miller, Mary Kavanaugh, Abraham Lopez, and then Dan Smith. So if you want to alternate the first two, come up to the podiums, please. And when they sit, if the next two would go up, please. Okay, Mary.
Okay, my name is Mary Pulis-Kavanaugh, and I'm concerned as an autism author and a certified brain coach that kids with developmental delays and kids with a chronic health condition will undergo even more mental and psychological stress because of the COVID-nineteen restrictions that are being proposed. Let's go over some COVID stats. To date, there has been zero cases of reports of students giving teachers COVID in the world. Point zero four percent of people age seventy and under died of COVID. Point zero three percent of people age twenty-five and younger died of COVID. Point zero one percent of children fourteen and younger died of COVID. To put this in perspective with other death rates of diseases for fourteen and under, heart disease, twenty-three percent died. Diabetes, four percent died. Flu and pneumonia, two percent died. What is really going on? Let's look at the nineteen seventy-five Amnesty International Report on Torture. Torture can occur without touch. This report talks about something called psychological manipulation technique, dependency, debility, and dread. Here are four of nine traits. And as I read these, keep in mind the mandatory masking, social distancing signage, and paw prints, directionals that children will be surrounded with daily. Number one, manipulates subject's environment. Number two, systematically weakens the victim. Number three, victim's capacity to resist is destroyed. Number four, disorient the victim. Now let me tell you a story. Here is a high-functioning six-year-old boy named David with autism in the classroom. He also has the label sensory processing disorder. He is already before COVID in a state of fight or flight. He is one out of, one out of six kids with developmental delays. His developmental delay is the most common one, speech and language. He also misses social cues and is very shy. David is no longer allowed to see an emotion on a face. David sees his friend, but now has to navigate a way to communicate with his friend at a distance. Normally, his friend struggles to understand him. Now it will be even harder, if not impossible. You know this is not about COVID. You know this will cause mental and psychological harm to all the kids of which fifty-four percent have a chronic health condition. The state of fear that we have all been coerced into has deactivated the amygdala of our brain. The amygdala determines how to react to the sensory input, which includes reading emotions like fear on the faces we see. We no longer have this ability. This also affects how we breathe. This long-term mental and psychological stress affects our immune system, which in turn changes the brain. The effects of this on the growing brains of children will pale in comparison to our fear of COVID. Please consider ending these restrictions and show your medical doctors and experts the real statistics. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Mary, if you'll speak to Dr. Walsh, she can address some of your points. Thank you. Mr. Miller?
Oh, okay. How are you doing? My name is Jeff. Um, I just wanted to start off with, um, just a couple of stats, again, kind of to follow up on her. These are, uh, Seminole County stats as of twenty-two, twenty-three hours ago. So in Seminole County, we have a population of four hundred and seventy-one thousand based off of two thousand and eighteen census. Out of that, sixty-eight thousand have been tested. So about fourteen percent of the population has been tested. Positive cases is about one point five percent. People have been infected. Out of that, only point zero three seven percent have actually gotten sick. The rest are actually asymptomatic. Hospitalized in Seminole County alone, your percentage rate is point zero two four percent. The death rate is point zero two five percent, which is also less than H1N1 when that came through in two thousand and nine, which we did absolutely nothing about. So when it goes back to that, also based on the available data, children appear three times less susceptible than adults to infection from COVID and are more likely to be asympta- asymptomatic and less likely to be hospitalized and die than adults. Schools can also reconfigure their environments to enforce social distancing. Schools in other countries have limited the number of children per classroom. Now, as I spoke today with a school that we were going to, our classroom size is going to be twenty-two kids. Okay? There's no reason why we can't get that adjusted, especially if we're only having forty percent of the students or forty-three percent of the school filled with people. So we should be able to have those rearranged to that, to space the desks five feet apart, install the plastic tabletop partitions. Also, the other, what other countries have been doing is limiting exposure by having all their children eat in their classrooms as well. So what they're calling, like in Germany, what they're doing in Germany is kids are going to school. They're only wearing masks as they enter the school and as they leave the school. The teachers wear no masks. The students wear no masks. They stay in their own little cohort, and they eat in their classroom, and when they go outside, they stay away from other children. That way, if they do have an infectious outbreak or anything like that, they only have a small group of people to contain, twelve to thirteen. So, and they've been in school already for about three and a half weeks with no increase in cases. Now, as for other things, so we have a child who is on an IEP, who needs additional help with reading, but he also has breathing and asthma disabilities. So I know a lot of people are gonna be like, "Oh, then he should be worried about COVID." The kid hasn't gone outside because he will not wear a mask. He chooses not to wear a mask. He does not want to wear a mask. So if we decide to send our kid to school, we have to send him to school so he can get that extra learning time, so he does not regress for an IEP teacher, but at the same time, he cannot sit in a classroom for six to seven hours out of the day wearing a face covering. So we're stuck in a catch-twenty-two. We also made the decision to send our kid face-to-face. So if we decide to send our kid to school, we have to send him to school so he can get that extra learning time, so he does not regress for an IEP teacher, but at the same time, he cannot sit in a classroom for six to seven hours out of the day wearing a face covering. So we're stuck in a catch-22. We also made the decision to send our kid face-to-face before the rules were changed to wear masks in the classroom. So as the ADA defines, "A person with disabilities or a person with a physical or mental impairment", in 1968, the Supreme Court provided a federal law from discriminating against people with disabilities. Educators and administrators must make it necessary that academic and medical accommodations ensure equal access to education. The American Lung Association, unless it's a surgical mask, it's still a 50% risk. And I already know a lot of people out there, what I'm wearing right now is not a, is not a good thing. This is all I choose to wear. The Center of Disease Control does not recommend masks for anyone who has trouble breathing. Supreme Court ruled in 1969 that students cannot create a, create a dress code based on stereotypes. This is a violation of the First Amendment right to speech, assembly, and especial association making decisions about their own health and their bodies integrity. As of today, many lawsuits have been filed in the county ready to take on this action. Currently, Seminole County has several lawsuits pending based on wearing masks. That's all for, that's all I have for now.
Thank you. Mr. Lopez.
I apologize in advance, I'm going to be fast because I've got three minutes and I want to use them all. Good evening, esteemed board members, Dr. Griffin, board professionals. I've come to respectfully request that you adopt a policy that encourages mask usage on a limited basis and not one that requires students to wear face coverings all day. I understand the sense of safety that masks provide to those of us that are anxious of the risks associated with the virus. However, the growing body of science suggests that excessive mask usage by children can prove to be more harmful than beneficial. As of yesterday, the number of children in Seminole County who have died from COVID-19 this year is zero, and to date, it's 90 total in the United States. The number of children in Seminole County who have been hospitalized because of COVID-19 is two, and unfortunately, both had pre-existing illnesses. By contrast, to date, 136 children have died from the flu in the United States this year. Additionally, data has shown that children are by and large spared of the effects of COVID-19. According to the latest data from the CDC, children and teenagers have accounted for just 5% of all confirmed cases and 0.06% of all reported deaths. There is also a wealth of evidence that children do not transmit the virus at the same rate as adults. Considering the data, there does not appear to be an immediate health danger in our school campuses that would support all-day mask usage. In fact, the data suggests that mask usage may not be necessary at all for children. The American Association of Pediatric, as of now, does not recommend masks for elementary school students. Instead, it was recommended that elementary school grades focus on hand washing, and if you can, try to use outdoor spaces whenever possible. A pediatric infectious disease specialist at the Children's Hospital of Colorado even stated that it may be counterproductive for children to wear masks as they fidget with the mask all the time and touch their face. And that act could potentially lead to more transmission as opposed to less transmission. Other counties and states are heeding that advice, even where the CDC has recommended that children wear face coverings. It is routinely recommended that if wearing the face covering causes the child to increased risk of getting exposed to the virus, masks should not be worn. Meanwhile, lower schools have been open in Sweden without masks for the entirety of the pandemic, and there has been little evidence of major outbreaks coming out of them. Board members, I ask, based on this best available science and public health data, all-day mask-wearing should not be required of children, as it actually puts them in greater risk and not less. I know, again, it makes us all feel better to know that kids are wearing masks, but our fears should not override the science, which suggests that our fears are actually putting our children at greater risk of getting sick. As pediatricians warn, if the children are constantly touching their face because they are wearing a mask for too long...
Your time, Mr. Lopez, if you want to finish your sentence or your paragraph.
I'll just finish my sentence real quick. The decision you're going to make this evening puts you all in a difficult position of balancing the fear and the desire to protect our children.
Thank you.
Just a few more words. With the uncomfortable truth offered by the data and science that masks will not make our children any safer.
Thank you.
In fact, it puts them at risk. Thank you for that extra time, and thank you all.
Mr. Smith.
My name is Dan Smith, I live in Longwood, Florida, and I'm employed by Seminole County Public Schools. I am the president of the Seminole Education Association, and I'm speaking on behalf of teachers in Seminole County Public Schools. As we move closer to Monday, the opening, there are still some unclear and undefined areas that cause me concern regarding the teachers, and I'm hoping that the issues can be resolved by the weekend, that'd be great. Now, a couple of things that we look on, as you know, I'm a classroom teacher and I am a teacher advocate, so I focus on the following things to take a look at. Is that the reopening plan be safe for the employees and students? Is that the teachers who are at high risk be accommodated by working remotely? And, of course, how the reopening plan would impact the SEA, SCPS, CBA, all right? Just a couple of weeks ago, Dr. Anthony Fauci, top U.S. infectious disease expert, stated that when it comes to the reopening school buildings for in-person instruction, there's still much, many more unanswered questions about how the virus spread by children than what we already know. And he stated, as you try to get back to the school, we're going to be learning about that, and he said, in many respects, unfortunately, though this may sound a little scary and harsh, I don't mean it to be that way, is that you're actually going to be part of the experiment and learning curve for what we need to know. Now, this is not unusual for teachers, they're in this thing and they're used to being part of the learning curve, but there hasn't really yet been any part of American life that has opened, even remotely, to a school opening. I mean, possibly, American life where a high number of people are placed in a small area for periods of time. The closest events would be sports, and they've allowed no spectators in this case, so we don't know what would happen with that. Conferences and conventions have been, have been pushed remotely, and even the, the national conventions, because this is election year, were canceled. So the school opening is going to be the first test on whether the country is ready to open or not, and the teachers, the staff, the students are going to be subjects to this set experiment. Now, what we are asking, and it seems to be well on its way with SCPS, according to the Florida Constitution, that the schools be efficient, safe, and secure. So the CDC recommends that in public, there's always going to be risk, but however, that if you must be in public, which this is a law, kids have to attend school, they don't have any choice, that they implement social distancing, mask-wearing, and washing frequently. And schools were made for social interaction and not necessarily for distancing, so wearing masks has become unfortunately more of a political issue than a public safety issue. And getting children to follow the safety rule is going to be a challenge. Now, if a child's parent doesn't believe in wearing masks, it's going to be very difficult to get the child to, to put the mask. Now, from what I'd seen, the adopted, the policy 8421, does say if a child refuses to wear a mask, they'll be reminded, which is unusual, and if the child continues to refuse to not wear the mask after being reminded, the school may reassign the child. Now, I'm hoping this wouldn't happen, but I don't know or haven't seen any plan for what would happen if that would be the case, if they would wind up going to remote or something like that. Now, in situations where teachers were at high risk being accommodated, when the reopening plan was approved this past July 14th, the plan gave parents choice on how the child should learn, from face-to-face to remotely, and the district surveyed parents, and at that point, 23% had chosen to send their kids back. 27% hadn't responded, and the original plan for the district was to default them to face-to-face. But I had spoken to Dr. Griffin shortly after that closed, and you guys reached out to 18,400 people instead of putting them to default, and that's appreciated. That was, from my understanding, a lot of it was done over a weekend with 200 SCPS employees, and that was very impressive. So by August 4th, I was told that 75% of those students had reached by and large and didn't choose face-to-face. And the Seminole Virtual Program was, was to grow fivefold, and by the end of last week, 93% of our teachers who requested accommodations were placed. All right? Now, I was in a few schools last week, and although I am grateful for the district to have the high accommodation numbers, the schools themselves posed a few problems. I'd seen a few elementary teams where, say, four, fourth and fifth grade teachers, same grade, all having both face-to-face and Seminole connect. Just by my quick numbers, I'm just asking if it's possible if they could be consolidated. So we, in those cases, we have the whole team doing it. It seemed like it could be pure connect and pure face-to-face in some of those. High school science teacher, as of yesterday, I haven't spoken to him today, has 36 kids in one of their classes. I'm hoping we can get that straightened out. Two second-grade teachers with 23 kids in the class, a kindergarten who still has 22 in the class. So I'm very grateful for the 4,600 teacher schedules that have been leveled off really well, but I'm hoping we can just push that a little further and get there. We're almost there. And under normal conditions, almost would be acceptable. For instance, 93% graduation rate, 93% conviction rate is great, but for the opening in a pandemic, let's see what we can do to push it all the way. There's a lot in the line, I'm grateful for the work the district's done and the school board's done, the superintendent's done, but let's get it done here. We're almost close, three days. Let's dot every i, cross every t, and as always, anything I can do, please let me know, I'm reachable. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. We gave you six minutes as the president of SEA to speak, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. There are no items removed for separate consideration.
Madam Chair, I'm terribly sorry to interrupt you, I have three comments.
I apologize. Thank you.
We received three comments for public comment over via email, and I have forwarded all three of these comments to you. The first comment is quite lengthy, it's from Ashley Walker, and Ashley is from Oviedo, and Ashley, I'm going to try to get all of this into three minutes, I speak quickly, but in the event I get cut off, just please rest assured that they have received your comments in full. All right, here it goes. School board members and Superintendent Griffin, in this proposal, can the superintendent or board please tell us what the criteria will be for lifting the mask mandate? I do not think it is fair to the students or teachers to go into this with no exit plan. This should not have to go on longer than it is absolutely needs to. And since we do not get a choice on the decision to mask our children, I believe we are at least owed transparency and specifics on what will be needed to end the mandate. I want to speak to you specifically in regards of the youngest children. Every recommendation for masking children comes with a stipulation that it should only be in the case that if it does not increase the likelihood of them touching their faces, mouth, and noses more frequently. This is the wording with the American Academy of Pediatrics' recommendation. It is incredibly unrealistic to think four, five, and six-year-olds aren't going to be constantly touching their faces and trying to adjust their masks. Any of us that have worn a mask these past months know that it is not comfortable. They are itchy, they make, they make breathing uncomfortable, they are uncomfortable on the ears, and they seem to never fit a young child correctly. All of this will lead to children being aware of them and messing with them throughout the day. It could also lead to frustrations and increased behavior problems, especially if they are not allowed to take a break from them. School is going to be very difficult with masks on in the classroom, especially for the younger grades, as they are just learning to read and need to be understood. Communication will be increasingly challenging. Young students need to be able to communicate with each other, and they really need to be able to communicate with their teachers. This, again, will lead to frustration and possible behavior problems. Anyone who knows children this age or has spent time in a pre-K or kindergarten classroom knows how difficult it is to enforce mask use and carry on an effective class while the kids are wearing masks. Professor Mark Woolhouse, a leading epidemiologist from the University of Edinburgh, an advisor to the British government, recently stated that there is no proof that COVID-19 has been transmitted from the student to a teacher anywhere in the world. The often-referenced study out of South Korea, which is, its own admittance has flaws, still only shows that children over 10 have the potential to transmit at levels similar to adults. They found younger children very, very, very rarely transmit this virus. This goes along with every other study out there for that age group. So even the most popular study in defense of masks for children still at best shows that it only, it is only in children over 10 where transmission could potentially be possible. Most of Europe has opened schools with mask requirements or suggestions for students over 10 only. We should look at adopting a similar approach, especially with our pre-K and kindergarten students. Again, all of the current research shows that children in these age groups are less likely to become infected and much less likely to transmit the virus if they do become infected. Remember, these kids have been together all summer, playing team sports, going to daycare, day camp, playing at the park, et cetera, with no masks on, and there still have been virtually zero significant child cases. The seasonal flu...
Just, you can finish the sentence.
I tried really hard, Ashley, I'm sorry.
No, finish the...
Let me finish the sentence.
Yes, or paragraph.
"The seasonal flu is much more dangerous for school-aged children and sends students and teachers to the hospital and ICUs every year. Never have masks, never have masks been suggested for children then."
Thank you.
Sorry, but the rest of the comments were forwarded to the board and the superintendent. Okay. The second comment comes from Michael Segal from Sanford. And Michael states, "Dear sirs and madams, we should not be opening our schools at this time. As per CDC guidelines, progression through phased reopening should not begin until the community sees a downward trend of COVID-19 cases for two weeks. We have not met this threshold. Opening the schools will lead to community spread and will likely have a negative impact on vulnerable populations, including our beloved teachers. It is irresponsible to open at this time. Please postpone the school year and regroup with the educators to devise the best possible curriculum for online learning. The sooner we tamp down the virus, the sooner we can all get back to normal. Thank you for your time, Michael Segal, Sanford, Florida." And the last comment comes from Cheryl Hornicle, and she writes, "I am writing this letter to contribute opinion regarding the meeting tonight discussing student requirements to wear masks on campus in classrooms, specifically where dividers are being utilized. After meeting the teacher for my son, who is entering kindergarten at Waukaha Elementary School this year, I noticed that all the children were all touching their masks, which has been identified as something that increases the chance of contracting the virus. The table at which my son will sit will be placed, will place him three feet from his tablemates. I strongly believe that masks are unnecessary if dividers will be placed on the tables. I saw the look in my son's eyes of sadness and disappointment when meeting his fellow students, which is quite contrary to when my daughter first started kindergarten, and all those kids were so happy and excited to be meeting new friends and starting school. Furthermore, I ask that you please consider heavily that there will be a negative socialization impact of mask-wearing with regard to the desire to learning itself or even attendance. Coupled with the current statistics of children under 18, there is little risk to this age group. I believe there is no need for such measures unless the student has underlying conditions with, upon which they have the choi, they have the choice to wear the mask. I plead to the board to not require masks to be worn during class time as long as dividers are available or, or social distancing measures can be taken. Thank you, Cheryl Hornicle."
Thank you very much. Superintendent Griffin, do you have a recommendation on the consent agenda?
My recommendation is that the consent agenda be approved as presented.
There are motions to approve?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any oppose? Motion passes, thank you.
Can I ask something?
Member Sanchez?
Oh, should we wait? I have a question just about it afterwards, so...
I can't understand you.
Can I ask a question now or later about the masks and how you can take them down at your desk when you're talking?
When we get to that, yes.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure.
So Superintendent Griffin, no items removed for separate consideration, no student discipline hearings, disposition, no unfinished business, correct?
That's correct, but we do have some new business.
Thank you.
And prior to my recommendation, I'd like to ask Attorney Beeman to review our policy, and then have the Seminole County Department of Health give us an overview in terms of mask use. Ms. Beeman?
Thank you, Dr. Griffin, board members. On July 14th, the school board approved the reopening plan, including the health and safety protocols requiring the mandatory use of face coverings for all persons while on district property. The school board also authorized the superintendent to make all modifications to that language as being, as may be necessary to fully implement that policy and to, to make sure that it is enforceable. And so the proposed language that is in your agenda book tonight is the emergency policy to fully implement the requirement for wearing face coverings on the school board's property. The first section, the preamble section, outlines that we are currently under a declared state of emergency as of March 9th, that state and national authorities, including the CDC... the CDC, recommend that everyone wash their hands often, avoid close contact, and cover their mouth and nose with a face covering to prevent the spread of COVID. And whereas at a special meeting on the 14th, the board authorized the creation of policies implementing the reopening that includes the mandatory wearing of the coverings. Therefore, pursuant to the authority, both constitutional authority and statutory authority of this board, the following language is proposed. In Section 1, except as provided in Section 10, all persons, including students, staff, visitors, contractors, and vendors must wear a face covering that fits snugly against the side of the face and covers both the mouth and nose while on the property owned, leased, or operated by the district at a district activity or riding a bus or in any other approved transportation provided by the district. Section 2 provides that face covering means a uniform piece of material that fits snugly against the side of the face and securely and completely covers a person's nose and mouth and remains affixed in place without the use of one's hands, whether store-bought or homemade, consistent with the Seminole County Health Department and CDC guidelines. Open chin triangle bandanas and face coverings containing valves, mesh material, lace, slashes, or holes are not permissible. Additionally, face coverings may not be worn in a manner that obstructs the wearer's vision or conceals the wearer's entire face, such as a ski mask or pantyhose. Section 3 includes that all employees and all students pre-K through 12th are required to wear a face covering when they are not able to maintain a minimum of six feet of separation from others. Students and employees may remove face coverings when socially distanced during high-intensity outdoor activities and may also remove those coverings while seated for dining. All face coverings must comply with school dress codes and the SCPS Conduct and Discipline Code. Section 4, all employees and students also must wear the face coverings while on the bus. Again, those coverings must comply with the dress codes and the SCPS Conduct and Discipline Code. Section 5 provides that each person is expected to supply their own individual face covering, but that the district will maintain emergency supplies of disposable face coverings for those who need them to comply with the policy. Looking at Sections 6 and 7, the wearing of a face covering is a health and safety issue, and all students are expected to follow the requirements for the health and safety of themselves, their fellow students, school staff, and others. So if students do not comply, they first of all should be reminded of the policy. If a student refuses to comply, after being reminded, the student will be removed from the class or other activity and may be administratively assigned to an alternative off-campus learning environment. Section 7, similarly for employees, all are expected to comply with the face covering requirement, and if they refuse to comply after being reminded, employees may be subject to discipline up to and including termination, consistent with any applicable collective bargaining agreement or other school board policies. Section 8, some district staff members may be required to wear additional personal protective equipment when directed to do so by their supervisor. 9 is that all visitors should be reminded that face coverings are required while at or inside a district school facility, and visitors and other persons who refuse to wear a covering may be removed from district property and subject to other available contractual and legal remedies. The exceptions for the face covering requirement, those persons under the age of 2, persons eating or drinking, persons for whom wearing a face covering would cause impairment due to a pre-existing health condition or disability, and a determination is made that an accommodation is not reasonably available. And board members, you will hear tonight the process that is in place for those students that have an IEP or a 504 to determine reasonable accommodations for those students in regards to the requirements of this policy. Looking at Section D, persons communicating with hearing-impaired individuals who need to see the other person's mouth to communicate and a reasonable accommodation is not available. So similarly, for employees that need to communicate, there are already discussions regarding reasonable accommodations for those employees to both facilitate the learning and to comply with the policy. I'm looking at Section E, public safety fire and other life safety personnel whose personal protective equipment are governed by their respective agencies, also an exception, and then any person for whom removal of the face covering is necessary to receive health care, or if a person is experiencing acute trouble, breathing, is unconscious or incapacitated, and is personally unable to remove the face covering without assistance, also an exception. And that exception is, in addition to what was first advertised based on conversation that we had with the Seminole County Department of Health, wanted to make sure that that was clear. You know, often I'm thinking that's, of course, but wanted to clarify that in the policy language. Looking at, as you all know, we are still receiving information regarding extracurricular activities like athletics. So Section 11 covers that there may be some nuances that we have to address and that the superintendent would be authorized to provide those procedures for the particular activity as we receive that information, including the FHSAA guidance that we are expecting to receive by the end of the week. I'm looking at Section 12. This is the catch-all for, as we're learning more and more, that the superintendent will establish procedures regarding face coverings, but may also address and change those procedures to fully be able to implement any additional or amended guidelines that we receive from the Seminole County Health Department, the CDC, and other health authorities. So that is the substantive part of the proposed emergency policy, and I will turn the remainder of the discussion over to Ms. Walsh with the Seminole County Health Department.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, Madam Vice Chair, board members, and Superintendent Griffin. Thank you so much for inviting me this evening to talk to you about a new and emerging infectious disease that we now have been acquainted with since December of last year and in our local community since March, our first reported cases were received by the local health department. This evening, you've heard many statistics already. I'll review some of those statistics. You know, in the state of Florida, fortunately, the data is made available to the public, and you can access that through the Florida Department of Health website, and it is updated every 24 hours. So most of the data that you heard this evening is the most recent, but there are some that I would like to highlight as well. In the state of Florida, since last evening, within the last 24 hours, there have been reported 542,792 positive cases with 8,553 deaths. I mean, the United States total, 5.11 million cases with 163,000 deaths. We have in Florida, in the Seminole County, reported 7,219 confirmed cases. We've tested over 69,000 individuals now out of the 471,000 population here in Seminole County. We have reported 130 deaths. Out of those 130 deaths, as was expressed this evening, the majority of those are in the elderly population. Actually, 75% of deaths reported are in those over 75 years of age. As was also mentioned, we have not had, fortunately, any reports of any pediatric deaths in Seminole County. However, we have had reports of pediatric deaths in the state of Florida. So far, for children under the age of 18, the state has reported over 42,000 positive cases, 42,761. Seven deaths, one among in the 5- to 10-year-old age group, two in the 11- to 13-year-old age group, and four in the 14- to 17-year-old age group. This is a new and emerging infectious disease, so we're still learning a lot about this infection. And there is a syndrome that has been discovered in other countries and here in the United States as well called multi-system inflammatory syndrome. So we have seen evidence of this syndrome within children in the state of Florida. Again, fortunately not in Seminole County as of yet, and we're hopeful that we won't. But there has been seven cases among children 0 to 4 years of age, 19 cases in children 5 to 14 years old, and four cases in 15- to 18-year-olds. Certainly, we are very concerned about this virus. I know that there's been comparison to the flu virus. This is not the flu virus. It is a coronavirus. The last time we saw something like this was in 2003, 2004 with SARS-CoV-1. Certainly not as infectious a virus as we're seeing with this one. So again, we're learning about this. So far, in Seminole County, we have had 478 hospitalizations. To date, we're averaging about 110 to 115 in the hospital. That certainly has come down in the last several weeks. We were, if you dial back to May, we were actually flattening the curve here in Seminole County as well as in the state. We had anywhere from 0 to 5 cases reported to us daily. As soon as we started to open up a bit, May 31st, we started to see people congregate. Certainly, there were phases that we saw evidence of folks kind of jumping from phase 1 to phase 3, but we actually saw exponential growth. And to put it into perspective, the week of May 31st, we had reported for Seminole County a total of 40 positive cases. The following week jumped to 215. At the peak, the week of June 21st, we had 1,089 cases. We were receiving over 200 reports a day. As you can see, we were in May at about 555 cases total for the whole event. We are now over 7,200. We have, what's encouraging is we've actually seen evidence of gradual decline in the number of cases, and part of that can be attributed to the use of masks. This particular county, through a county order, has requested that people wear masks in the community. So the week of June 29th, we saw cases 909, July 5th, 898. Going to July 19th, 705, July 23rd, 671, July 30th, that week, 538. And within the last seven days, we've had 473 cases. So we're definitely seeing a decline or flattening of the curve. It's just up here versus here where it was in May. So we're hopeful that we'll continue to see that decline. That would be very helpful. So as far as the number of cases per 100,000 population, in Seminole County, we have about 1,581 cases per 100,000 population, or if you want to look at it per thousand, it's 15.81, just under 16 cases per thousand population. The, most cases are reported within the ages of 15 to 34. So we are seeing quite a few cases. In fact, when we had the surge or exponential growth, we saw a good many cases in the 20 and 30-year-olds, folks who wanted to get out and get together again and socialize, and certainly they were spreading the virus in that respect. A lot of our young people fare pretty well with the infection. What's complicated is when they expose others who have either underlying health conditions or the elderly. Those populations do not fare well with this particular virus, and sometimes it takes weeks before they actually decline significantly and die. You know, we've had a surge of deaths reported to us within the last couple of weeks, and these are individuals who've been in the hospital for upwards of a month. So it may take, it may take a while, you know, as our healthcare workers are desperately trying to save lives before, you know, this individual declines and they can no longer help them. Here in Seminole County, we've had 527 pediatric cases reported, a positivity rate of 11.4% in our pediatric population tested. 122 of those cases were in 0 to 4-year-olds with one hospitalization, 245 in 5 to 14-year-olds with one hospitalization, and over 1,400 cases in 15 to 24-year-olds with nine hospitalizations. So that kind of frames our concern. Of course, as was already mentioned, the number of pediatric cases don't seem near as many as adult cases, but adults certainly can be exposed, whether it's from their colleagues. You know, certainly, as again was mentioned, there's still research out there on how readily transmissible it is from a child to an adult. You know, again, too much still to be known about this virus. So we do follow, in public health, guidelines from the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention, as well as the American Academy of Pediatrics, and I appreciate those who presented this evening referencing research and credible sources, because certainly, you know, we look at, we look at the research in making decisions. And out of an abundance of caution, we certainly want to protect everyone so that they don't have to suffer from the complications of this virus. You know, with flu season, it's for a whole year. Oftentimes, the data you see is data for a whole year. We've barely been within this response for about five months, so still much, much more to learn. As far as, let's see if I can go to the next slide here. Ah-ha, okay. It works. So basically, how does COVID-19 spread? Well, it is a respiratory illness, and so it is spread through respiratory droplet, larger droplets, therefore the six-foot recommendations, because the respiratory droplet, the size it is, really can't travel much further than that. And so there is a video here from the Centers for Disease Control that I'll play next and then talk to you a little bit on the other side.
We believe this new virus spreads mostly from person to person through respiratory droplets produced when someone who is sick coughs or sneezes. This is similar to how flu and other respiratory illnesses spread. These droplets can land in the mouth or nose of people nearby or possibly be inhaled into the lungs. Most person-to-person spread happens when people are in close contact. It's also possible that this virus can spread when someone touches a contaminated surface and then touches the mouth, nose, or eyes.
Okay, that was brief. But to let you know, this is a respiratory illness or virus similar to the flu, also a respiratory virus. But again, different viruses also has different characteristics. Let me see if I can. Yeah, I got it, yeah. The incubation period for coronavirus, as far as the researchers know at this moment, the experts, is 2 to 14 days. So you'll often hear that there's a quarantine period of 14 days if you happen to be exposed to somebody. That 14 days is the length of an incubation period, just to make sure that if you were exposed, you're not going to develop symptoms with it that period and infect somebody else. Isolation, on the other hand, you often hear of 10 days. Somebody who's diagnosed with COVID-19 or coronavirus, they are isolated or advised to isolate for 10 days because that's the period of time that is known at this moment that they're considered infectious. Okay, so sometimes there's questions regarding why the 10, why the 14. We hear different things. That's the difference between the two. One is that you have the virus, you're potentially infectious for 10 days. The other is that you are in quarantine while you potentially incubate the virus for upwards of 14 days. There are a number of people that they're discovering that are asymptomatic. So all the data that we went over tonight, this is just in the cases that we know about. There's probably a good number of people in our community who are asymptomatic or mildly symptomatic, and they don't care to go get tested. So we don't even know about those folks. We only know about the ones who test positive or negative. You know, the Department of Health is, because this is emerging disease, we're receiving reports of all positive and all negative tests, so we're able to determine, you know, what percentage of the population, as you can see, tests negative as well. In epidemiology, we call this the tip of the iceberg with any disease, not just COVID, but with any disease. What gets reported to us is just a little bit of what's actually going on in the community. What gets reported to us is just a little bit of what's actually going on in the community. These are the people who go to the doctor, seek medical attention, and get tested. Our state surgeon general, Dr. Scott Rivkees, certainly provides guidance to all public health entities in the state of Florida. Florida is unique in that we're an integrated system of health. All 67 county health departments report up to the state surgeon general. And on July 20th of this year, he also put out a health advisory regarding masks. And that was advising wearing masks in public, encouraging elderly and vulnerable populations to limit interactions outside of the home, urging all individuals to refrain from participating in gatherings of more than 50 people, and all individuals in Florida should wear masks in any setting where social distancing is not possible unless any of the following apply. As was already mentioned, if it's, a child is under two years of age, of course, the mask is not recommended or required. An individual has one or more medical conditions or disabilities that prevent wearing a face covering, and individuals obtaining a service involving the nose or face for which temporary removal of the mask covering is necessary to perform the service. An individual works in a profession where use of a face covering will not be compatible with the duties of the profession, or an individual engaged in outdoor work or recreation with appropriate social distancing in place. So very similar to what you've heard this evening as well. So because we don't have a vaccine yet, because we don't have treatment that's 100% effective yet, are really, our only line of defense in preventing the spread of this virus is what is considered non-pharmaceutical interventions. Basically, what you're hearing, the use of facial coverings, the social distancing, and the hygiene, whether it's hand hygiene, disinfection of surfaces, and so forth. I mean, these are proven methods to keep the spread of viruses. And so what you see here is the safety measure, social distancing. The recommendation is, as was mentioned, just at least six feet, because this is a large droplet. Also encouraging covering coughs and sneezes. Now, this is something we talk about every year. When you cough or sneeze, certainly whatever is in your nasal or respiratory passages can be spread to others. If there's a bacteria or virus there, pretty readily, you know, can spread that way. So that's nothing new. Keep students in the same groups with the same adults daily when possible. This is what we call cohorting, you know, where you can keep the same folks together. This would, again, minimize the spread of this particular germ as well as others. Staff should maintain distance, avoid sharing food, drinks, and utensils. This is not new either. This is, you know, infection control, which we practice every day. And avoid touching the face, especially the mouth, nose, and eyes. Anywhere where you have mucous membranes, certainly this is a portal of entry for a virus or bacteria to get into your body. So that's why that recommendation is given. Again, looking at CDC guidelines and American Academy of Pediatric recommendations, currently the CDC does recommend the use of face coverings in public settings and around people who don't live in your household, especially when other distancing is not possible. We are certainly seeing evidence of the face coverings definitely being effective in communities. And here in Seminole County, again, you know, after our county ordinance, we, we have seen that the numbers are declining. So it is helpful. I don't know if I went over all that. Okay. As far as face, whoops, face masks not being recommended, we mentioned for children younger than two years of age, anyone who has trouble breathing, of course, anyone who is unconscious, incapacitated or otherwise unable to remove the cloth face covering without assistance, those with certain medical conditions, as was mentioned this evening, whether it be developmental, respiratory, tactile aversion, or other conditions, and in situations where it may impede the education process. And I know that the presenter after me will talk about those things in detail. So as far as, you know, whilst face, cloth face coverings are strongly encouraged to reduce the spread of COVID-19, CDC certainly recognizes that there's specific instances where wearing a cloth face covering may not be feasible. And this is where it's a collaborative effort between parents, guardians, caregivers, teachers, and school administrators to talk about those situations and to make accommodations. So I'm going to invite up Ms. Gigi Riva de Nera. She is our school health manager for the Florida Department of Health in Seminole County, and she's going to talk to you a little bit about some guidelines on how to place a mask, how to remove a mask, so that you're, you're doing it safely and you're not spreading germs. And also, how do you take care of your mask for that very same reason? So she's going to go over a couple of those things, and then she and Ms. Stephanie here are going to do a little demonstration on different types of masks that you may see in a school setting, and then how to work with those, as well as some infection control measures. So Gigi, you want to come on?
Good evening, members of the board. Thank you, thank you. So I'm going to share some accompanying information and recommendations from the American Academy of Pediatrics and the CDC regarding the use of face masks. Very important that information on how to properly wear the mask, how to care for the mask, also accompanies the wearing of the mask. So we want to make sure that we communicate this information with parents, staff, members of the community. So some important guidelines is to make sure that you wash your hands or sanitize your hands with hand sanitizers that contain 60% alcohol prior to putting on your mask and after you take the face covering. Face coverings should also be kept dry. Once they are wet, it makes it difficult to breathe, so it's very important that those are kept dry. Also, information about not sharing those items. So just like with any personal items, face masks should not be swapped, should not be shared. Very important that if possible, they are labeled, but with the individual's name, if that's necessary, with the student's name, so as to not have any confusion as to who the item belongs to. In addition to that, making sure that you have a place where you can store the mask is also recommended, having a designated spot or a bag where you could carry or just put away the mask is also recommended. Spaces like a personal locker or cubbies make good spaces also to save and store the masks. Also washing the masks, we want to make sure that with these face coverings that they're washed daily, and that there are, especially if they're physically soiled, that they can be washed daily, and that you have other availables for the day of the week. So those are some of the recommendations. I'm going to introduce Stephanie Jackson. She's going to be sharing some, some visuals and also some demonstrations, and I'm going to move over there to help her out.
We will need to make that mic over.
Absolutely. So we have a few different options that we provided for face masks in case the students do come to school without their mask and we need to give them, or adults as well, so our staff. So we do have cloth masks that will be available for the staff, similar, actually, to the one that I'm wearing right now. We have, these are surgical masks that they have available. There's a couple of different ones depending on what we're able to get in stock at the time. So they have a little bit more, these are two-ply, they're a little bit better protection. So our clinic staff and staff in medical classrooms, we're asking that they wear those masks to give them a little bit greater protection against those students coming into the clinic with symptoms. For our peds, we have some smaller size masks. The size of the masks really do make a difference, because if there's not, if it's too large, this air is able to escape, it's falling off, they're playing, playing with it more, making a little bit more fidgeting with their face. And white ones as well. So there's a few different types of masks that we'll have available. This N95 mask type that you see that Dr. Griffin is wearing as well. A little bit different shape, and again, a different protection level than the surgical masks or the cloth masks that I'm wearing right now. There has been talk of this clear type of mask for the staff who need, or the staff who need to talk to students who are unable to hear, and so they need to see their mouth and lips. This one is a little interesting fit. I don't know how comfortable it will be for the staff to be able to wear that and communicate, but there is an option for something that does have a clear mouthpiece for them. And for the face shields, for my clinic staff, we and medical classrooms, we're asking that they're, they wear the face shields when they are in contact with students who are showing symptoms of COVID-19, just as an added layer of protection for their eyes and face. As you can see, with the face shield, this part is not secure, so there is an opportunity for those respiratory droplets to escape this way. So we just want to make sure that everyone understands that this face shield is not a substitute for wearing a face mask. This is an extra or an added layer of protection for those, those persons that are in the clinic dealing with those symptomatic students, or if there is a case where there is an exemption, then this is one of the options that we'll have for the other, for those students in the classroom, or for the teachers who want that extra layer of protection, because there may be a student who is not wearing a face mask. I don't know if that made it more difficult to hear. Another added layer of protection for those students. The elementary classrooms will have about 10 of these desk shields per classroom, so it won't, there won't be one for every student that is in the classroom, but this is just another addition for those students who may be needing an exemption for wearing that face mask. Then they have this, as well as distancing that student away from the other students, just trying to put a few more layers of protection in there for the other students in the classroom and for the staff that are working with those students. Any other questions about the protection for the mask?
Members Sanchez.
Yes, I'm, I was contacted by a speech and language pathology teacher, and I just want to make sure that we are providing those for them to try with the open. We have these in stock for each. Okay, thank you.
For those who would like to use them, yes. Any other questions?
No, thank you so much for your presentation. Very informative.
I'm going to have Donna continue with the presentation to address a few of the myths.
There certainly have been other concerns as well about wearing masks, and one of them that has come up frequently is that this decreases oxygen flow to the blood or brain, or could cause carbon dioxide toxicity. The experts tell us right now that there's really no evidence that face coverings significantly influence oxygen and carbon dioxide exchange. They're basically, there is a barrier for respiratory droplets from traveling into the air, but they do allow oxygen to flow, you know, from the mask. And then the other is, do face coverings increase risk of infection? This was brought up this evening too, you know, with the high-touch area, if the children are touching it frequently. You heard Gigi and Stephanie talk about how important it is that you either replace these daily or clean the cloth masks, so that you cut down on potential germs and spreading. So, so again, you know, it's, it's important for proper care of these masks. These are disposable. So certainly, you can't wash these, but you would replace them. And so the school will definitely make sure that if you don't have the resources to provide your children with masks, those will be provided for you. So there's certainly some resources available for everyone. The hand hygiene practices can't emphasize enough, you know, we do this every day. We talk to our children about the importance of washing their hands and not spreading germs. So opportunity to just continue to educate our children on the importance of that in our daily lives. Also, it's, it's difficult when you say, "Don't touch your eyes, nose." You know, you probably catch yourself doing that quite frequently during the day, but, and when you try to teach children not to do those things, that's even more challenging. But an educational opportunity, you know, to continue as a parent, to reinforce those things. It's not going to be 100% perfect, but you certainly, through your education, can help minimize the spread of this virus. So with that, I am going to introduce Amy, and she is going to go over some of the face covering exemptions and accommodations that Seminole County Public Schools has provided.
Good evening, thank you, School Board, Dr. Griffin. As was mentioned in the emergency policy under Section 10, there are needs sometimes for our students that have disabilities or underlying health conditions to request an exemption or accommodation for a face covering. We are uniquely positioned as an educational system to process those accommodation requests, because we process accommodation requests every day. So as with all accommodations under ADA or IDEA, this will be handled as a team process. So that application will be made as a team with your school, in collaboration with your school board nurse that's assigned to that school, and your 504 or IEP team, because the exemptions are either medical in nature or disabling condition that falls under ADA, under 504, or IDEA for an IEP. If the current medical condition or disabling condition is not already known by the school, the parent must provide documentation to the school for consideration in that exemption That team will then meet and make a determination. The first determination they can make is that they are approving the exemption. If they approve an exemption, an exemption, an individual healthcare plan will be written or updated by the school board nurse. That plan will include accommodations or exemption information, and that 504 or IEP team will convene and document precautions and additional PPE that is needed. When you, when you remove that face covering, additional layers of support and protection must be provided to the other students in the classroom and the staff members that are interacting with that student. And so that will be documented in the form. So some of the things that can be utilized, as was mentioned, is a face shield in place of the face, covering that's tighter to the face, an extra barrier, extra space in the room. We will work with you to individualize that plan of support for your child. The other option is a temporary approval with recommendations. We also realize that we're working with young children, some students with disabilities that are aversive to wearing them or can't wear them all day, so we're willing to work with you to build that tolerance, so with your student service providers. So some of the recommendations might be to trial different face coverings, to provide that exemption while we work through that process with your family. So we'll, we'll work with you as an individual team to come up with a plan of support under that temporary approval, and come back and reconvene at the table. And then not approved. So if you, if we come to the table and the team determines that what's been presented is not an approved exemption, then we would mark that not approved, and we would document that your child still must attend with a face covering, and then it would be signed. Thank you.
Board members, any questions?
I would like to. The student that was referenced earlier that had tactile and those kind of things, and had an IEP already, so what you're telling us is that you would make as many accommodations rather than just flat-out no mask? So possibly more space in the classroom, a shield, those kind of things to give the student?
Yes, all reasonable accommodations must be made before an exemption is granted.
Okay, thank you.
Member Sanchez.
I just want to clarify, like, we're six feet apart, and we're in our area. And according to what Attorney Beaman read, that if I was in my space right here and I wanted to do this for a few minutes, can I do that? And then pull it back up?
Ms. Beaman?
If I'm in my own space and there's nobody near me, or if I'm a teacher, which I have been, can I stand up? And I am distance away from my kids, can I talk? Put it back up? Or can I have a common sense, an area in my room that would give them, like... Or can I have a common sense, an area in my room that would give them, like, when I have centers, a little reading station that would give them a break for a few minutes?
Member Sanchez.
The language includes that that has to be able to be maintained. So as written, when you're in a classroom and you are, if you are six feet apart, and that can be maintained, which means no one's moving, the teacher would typically be the person that would be able to identify that that is able to be maintained because it's the teacher that most likely would be moving from student to student. So certainly there is that opportunity there for when you are six feet apart and that social distance can be maintained for that mask or the facial covering to be removed.
Okay, thank you. I just want a clarification on it. I already knew that, but I just wanted that to be publicly said again. Thank you.
Thank you, Amy.
Yes, you're welcome.
Is that everybody?
Any questions?
Okay, Superintendent Griffin, do you have a recommendation, please?
I do, Madam Chair. My recommendation is that the School Board of Seminole County adopt Policy 8421, mandatory face coverings, masks during COVID-19 emergency.
Is there a motion?
No move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Member Calderon.
I just wanted to first thank the community members, the parents, the teachers, staff members that have reached out to us with emails, phone calls, text messages to share their opinions. And I just wanted to take a moment to share how I am going to arrive at my decision for your recommendation. I have never seen an issue that has been presented before us that has become so divisive. There doesn't seem to be a happy medium. I think there is a lot of politics involved, there's a lot of fake news involved. But I have to say that I have to base my decision not on emotion, not on politics, not even, I hate to say, education. To me, this is a public health issue. As you know, I'm married to a professional, a medical professional, and he is in PPE all day long, except he has a few minutes at lunch if he can take the PPE off, but he is healthy. I have attended hundreds of WebEx seminars, Zoom seminars all summer, as I'm sure many of you have. I've got reports in front of me from AMA, from American Pediatrics, from CDC, and to agree with our health professionals from Seminole County Health Department. This is an hour-by-hour basis, which is why I'm glad, Serina, you added that number 12 to our policy, because what we know today isn't going to be what we know tomorrow or next week or next month. And I would rather look proactively than reactively, you know, without getting emotional. But I even reached out to all the three presidents of our local hospitals, and I asked to talk locally with their local medical directors. And what I heard from pediatrics, what I heard from chief medical officers, what I heard from infectious disease doctors, what I heard from virologists, that mask-wearing was the most effective way to rule this out. I know we've talked a lot about spending some of the cares money on air conditioning units and other things like that. There isn't any longitudinal research on that as yet. So, you know, being trained in a medical household, it's not the first rodeo that I've been reading medical reports. And that's how I came to my decision. It wasn't a quick decision. I really, truly appreciated all the input from the community and the staff members that have reached out, but I have to base my decision based on the medical input that I got locally, nationally. I've tried to read medical journals in favor of masks, medical journals, you know, opposing it. I've read research from other countries, but this, to me, is a local school board decision, and I have to think locally and support our students, our teacher, and our community. As Donna pointed out, you know, our employees will be going to a home at some point in time. So thank you, Madam Chair, for letting me share how my decision will be made.
Member Craft, you look like you want to say something.
I didn't know if we were going to discuss in order or not. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I think our health professionals have clearly expressed what they're seeing with the mandated face mask in our county. Our kids are not back at school yet, so we don't know what we're going to expect, and I feel like we need to be absolutely as preventative as we can to keep all of our staff, all of our kiddos safe, and I will be supporting the emergency order.
Thank you. Member Sanchez.
I just wanted to say thank you so much for all your information and that, you know, being in the classroom for so many years and listening to everyone speak, and we appreciate everybody's views and all the things that everybody has to say. And clearly, I worked with, you know, little children, so I do know it's difficult, but getting them used to it, they're going into stores with it, they have to wear them, they're mandatory, it's mandatory now, and they are getting accustomed to it. However, if a child has an IEP 504 that states that they cannot, then that's a different situation, and we will work with you, like Ms. Elwood said. So it's extremely important that everybody realizes what was is not what is now. And we, it changes, like Dr. Calderon says, hour by hour or minute by minute. Nobody seems to know. And we have to be proactive, we have to make sure our staff and our employees and our students are safe. One death is too many, guys, and this is not something that we're going to take lightly. And we just need to go through this, and this is not a political game at all.
Vice Chairman Pennak, anything?
I have, I couldn't have said it better, Dr. Calderon. Thank you, the medical advice that we've received. This is not a political-driven decision. This is a health and life safety decision based on 67,000 kids in our district and their families and our community, and that is what's driving my decision as well. I do have one clarifying question. We didn't address how, if this policy would be removed, what would be the factors that would cause us to lift this policy prior to the 90 days stated in the policy?
It could be the, really, the reverse process of what happened that got us here tonight. We would meet with the medical officials that we have been meeting with in cooperation with the Seminole County Health Department, and if the numbers are at a drastically lower and a continuing negative trajectory, we would be, I would bring this to you to lift it.
Okay. Thank you. Dr. Griffin, could you lift it in increments? Could you choose to do elementary first and then progress from there?
Yeah, I could have those ideas, but I would run those by the Health Department and the medical officials. Anything that I would bring to you would be based on science and medical advice.
Okay, thank you. I echo what all of you have said, you know, being on the webinars, talking to the hospital of directors and doctors and folks that we know personally who may or may not have exhibited symptoms or actually had COVID. And there are a lot of tough decisions that parents have had to make and teachers have had to make, and staff members, and I recognize that, too. Our county still has a mandate for wearing masks, and I can appreciate that and respect that very much. But any other? No, thank you. Not at this time. Further discussion, board members? Okay, I'm ready to call the question. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Dr. Griffin, do you have a report for us?
Both reports, the monthly grant reports and the federal project are read-only items.
Thank you. With no further business, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you. Thank you. If you want to speak to someone to address your questions, sir?